Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Ellis County Commission Meeting to order. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Avi, will you call roll, please?
Commissioner Neil Younger.
Present.
Chair Nathan Liker.
Present.
Commissioner Michael Burgess.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. The Order of Business, we are going to move EMS until all personnel arrive. Okay. Are there any other changes? I don't believe so.
Nope.
Okay. Next prior minutes, gentlemen, have you had a chance to inspect those?
Everything looks good to me.
Mm-hmm.
Fine.
Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there any discussion regarding it?
I have none.
I'll move to approve consent agendas, items A through G.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Issues from people not on the regular order of business. Okay?
Good morning. John Schulte, Mayor of Victoria.
Morning.
With the opening of our Dollar General store east of town, our speed limit on Old Forty is still at 55 miles an hour at the Dollar General entrance. We've had a request from the City Council to reduce that down to 45 miles an hour. That is a county road, so I believe that we would need permission from the County Commission to start that process. Do you have any objection to that?
Okay. John, would it be 45 or would it reduce to 40 like it is coming in from the west?
It's 45 all the way through.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we want to go down to 45. We want to extend it just a little bit east of the Dollar General. So the people are down to 45 by the time they hit Dollar General.
Okay. I have no problems, Michael.
No, in general, no problem.
So is it okay if I work with Brendan?
I guess is this something that we should get our sheriff involved of? They say 40 and everybody's going to drive 50 some. I mean, is the City of Victoria good with that? I mean, while we're doing it, let's maybe get him involved if the other commissioners are good with that. I'm just throwing that out there, John.
Absolutely. No, if we're going to go through the trouble of changing it, let's...
Let's do it.
Sure.
Brendan would like to come up on this issue.
Speed study.
Yeah.
By an engineer.
Brendan McKay with Ellis County Public Works Department. So in order to change the speed limit, that is a regulatory sign, which has to be passed by resolution. In addition to that, there's a statute saying that Kansas will follow the MU, Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And there it states that we would need a licensed professional engineer to conduct a traffic study to determine what would be the safe speed or using the 85th percentile for what is the safest speed on there. Most likely it'll be $1,000 to $1,500 for them to come back and say, yep, using the MUTCD, we recommend a speed from X to C. And then the commission would be able to select a speed limit in that range and pass a resolution at a future date. I just asked John to bring it forward to you because it will cost the PE cost for it.
Okay.
Will that, Brendan, while you're up there, will that fall underneath the other signage that we are having done and striping to help out on that? Or is that a whole different...
No, that signs and striping is just for, it's for all the major collectors.
Okay.
It's new pavement marking, center line, edge lines, and then no passing zones, reviewing that. They're not reviewing the speeds at this point in time, but what the grant we've received for that, you'll be signing here later this morning if you approve it, which I would hope you do. That's for the painting markings on all the major collectors and then reviewing and updating the no passing zones. Because there are some slight rises, slight crests that we found that we feel would be better to have that done.
Okay. All right.
I think it's a good move to go ahead and have John work with Brendan to initiate the process to get that directive going.
All right, thank you.
You're good with that, John, then?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other person sent on?
Hi, my name's David Graham. I recently built a house on Fairground Road, on the south side of Fairground Road. We've had some issues with the length of the road in front of our house and in front of my neighbor's property recently with a snowstorm. Our, the road is, kind of goes up on a hill and Fairground Road's a little over nine miles long. I drove it the other day. The only really issue as far as the drifts and stuff are right in front of my house. That road is on a hill and goes from a serviceable road, which is two lane, and then at the hill, it goes to a one lane with no notice, no signage, and no visibility, to be honest with you. I did a video two days ago after the guys snowplowed. And because of the size of the road, they've had to create 10-foot drifts at the top of the hill. Those drifts in any type of weather conditions, especially in the winter, when it's windy, there's no visibility. From that road, there's heavy equipment that comes down that road, semis, tractors, all that stuff. And it's a 55 mile an hour road. So you, we theoretically are going to a hill with no signage that says that it's going from a two lane to a one lane. Can I show you guys the photos or video? It's a four-second video of what I'm talking about. Brendan was on site as well.
Is it different than the pictures that we had been...
Yeah, it's a video. You just saw photos.
Okay.
So, this is what I'm talking about. This is right in front of my house. It's the visibility factor. So, I don't know if Brendan wants to elaborate a little bit more. But my thing is always about, you know, community safety and county safety. The Jacobs who have lived there recently have got blocked in by the county. Again, this isn't an attack on the county or anything that they've done wrong. They're dealing with something that is, was done 150 years ago without the proper engineering. And it's a massive flaw that's there. It's definitely a safety issue, but my, recently, my neighbors who have been dealing with this 20 years have complained to the county multiple times. I don't know if they ever came to the county commissioner's office. But they got stuck in the driveway because of the county's plowing. Created an eight-foot drift where I had to call Joel from Flatliner Dirt and he laughed. He said, "This is insane. They landlocked you." And, you know, whether we, if I pay someone to come out and plow, doesn't really matter because when the county comes through, it blocks us in with eight-foot drifts. And again, this is something that you guys haven't seen before because this is a newly developed property. We access our property from an easement that is shared from Fair, 1252 Fairground Road. These three plots have been purchased in the last year with new homes that we've been building. And so, wanted to just make it so it's serviceable, no issues with emergency vehicles, and obviously no wrecks. I'm not trying to have, you know, memorial flowers in front of my house.
So, the property, the way you access your property is more or less a private drive off of Fairground Road?
It's an easement. Yep. It's an easement from 52, or 1252 Fairground.
Okay. Go ahead.
And you maintain that, or is that...
I maintain that.
The whole thing?
Yeah, I maintain that, but it's not maintainable. So, for instance, I know it's my responsibility to clear the driveways. When we had, when we showed Brendan to come out, after the county plowed, we created a six-foot drift. And it was just one pass. So my, what I've told them was like, you have to kind of look at it as, did I just do something? Their job is to clear the road, but did I just create more issue right here when I passed through doing my job? And the answer was yes. They helped out the other day because they're in front of it and they saw the issue and they said, "We have to fix this. This is right in front of us." And so, we had to call them back out. So it wasn't the lack of work ethic or somebody not doing their job. It's the fact that they're dealing with something that's 150 years old and needs to be corrected. It's an engineering flaw.
Any comment, Michael?
No, thanks for bringing it to our attention.
I'll tell you, I mean, I've lived here and in the county and been in the county a lot of years and this isn't a unique problem to your area, just because we have hills and obstacles throughout the county. So, I received calls from other people who were just wishing that the maintainer would make it out sooner to plow a single path through. So, I hate to say it this way, but it's part of living in the county and owning a road like that. Some of it, you know, may come from changing the way your drive is and looking at different alternatives to access a different road. To, it's going to be cost prohibitive, I believe, from the county standpoint to elevate or change that. And we're not in the driveway plowing business.
Right.
So...
Yeah, understood. I mean, my theory, my thought is, is that if you were in my position, right, you moved out there, you recently purchased a property, you see an issue, how can I help, you know, as well? That was my, I'm not sitting here with my hand out asking you guys to fix an issue. It's also like, how do we avoid a problem? I know that there's other county issues, but if we're right in front of this one right now, let's look at this and say, what can we do together to fix this to avoid an accident? If there's a piece of trash and, you know, you know, literally just walk past it. And no, you could, even if it's not yours, you pick it up, throw it away, keep the area clean, stuff like that.
Right. I understand. And I understand the thought process of, well, okay, well, a problem was created from the plowing of the road.
Right.
Unfortunately, it doesn't happen very often.
No, I know it doesn't happen very often as far as the snow. It's the fact that we always get wind. Hays always has wind. You just saw a video that was caused by wind. And that doesn't really determine whether a tractor's going to come down over that hill at the same time as, you know, a pedestrian.
No.
And so, when there's lack of visibility on a county road that is caused by a flaw, I just think it's like, okay...
But is the, is the lack of visibility caused by the flaw of the county or the conditions in the area? Remember, you and other residents have chosen to move into those areas.
Right, no, correct.
So...
I drove down County Road. Like I said, I just sent you that video as well, that 17-minute video. There's nothing like that on that road. And I know that they have, you know, miles to plow and all that stuff. My thing is, is that if we're right in front of it, because I'm not going to, if it, if I have to have MND, Hess, Joel come out, this will get addressed, what, you know, but I want your guys' assistance and the proper process to go about it. I just think you guys sitting in that, those chairs, if you were in my spot, you would go, okay, we've got to get this in front, because I pass it, you don't pass it every day. I pass it four times a day.
I deal with, I deal with stuff where I own equipment where I have to go out and plow roads to get to do my job.
I do too. I'll pay for the services. I don't have the equipment.
Right, but what I'm saying is, for me to go do my job outside of here,
Yeah.
I have to go get equipment to open roads to go take care of things.
Yeah.
So, I'm not standing out here or calling the county to do so. So, I understand the concern to do it, but it's a self-responsibility.
A self-responsibility of what?
To open your, it's part of living out here.
I opened it. Sir, you're not understanding, sir. I opened it. The county came through and closed it. I already paid for it to be open. So if I already paid a third-party contractor to come through and open it, and then they come back through and close it on me again, that's where, that's why I'm sitting there saying, hey, what's, what's the best way to resolve this? Because the drifts, if somebody could come out there, they're 10-foot high. Right? And so, I'm not saying that that's even the issue. The issue is, is that you're, we're going on a hill. And on the other side of that hill is a tractor. If you're in this vehicle, don't you want the tractor to know, hey, this is, goes from a two lane to a one lane? It goes from, it's supposed to be 55 feet, right, maybe 60 feet, to 12. And they don't know until it's too late. That's my problem is, is like, whether it's me or somebody else, whether it's you, that's a problem. I would rather have the tractor know or you know that this is going to be one lane at the top of the hill. You're not going to see it. By the way, if it's weather, you won't see it at all.
Are you concerned with the snow or with all-weather? Because I know the road you're on.
Yeah. No, I'm concerned with the, my concern is that there is that, the length that the county has to deal with. It's not, they don't have enough space. They don't have enough area to push the snow. As Brendan said, hey, I see this issue too. We don't have enough space right here. We've got to, we've got to expand this area to be able to fix this issue.
Brendan, would you like to comment at all?
So did you have Joel, Joel clear, clear out to the county road and beyond, which way? Or was the maintainer there?
He, yeah, he had grader.
Okay.
Yeah, he had a grader. And then he also tried to get out my neighbor as well. But he graded all around my circle drive, quarter of a mile all the way down to the county road.
Okay.
And then, came back after it was plowed. And after it was plowed, he could barely get through because there were six-foot drifts created.
Okay, because I was just going to say, where I live, it's the same way. And I've, excuse my language, but I've cussed the county many a times because I clear my driveway out, come home from work, and I got a three- or four-foot berm in front of my driveway. So, I have to get my equipment back out, do it. I wish it would be a timely thing, and I don't think we can make that happen because we're trying to get all the roads open too.
It's not, it's not entryway. It's like probably eight cars in length.
Beyond?
At the top of the hill.
Okay.
The entryway, no problem, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, Mr. Jacobs, my neighbor, he's got a plow. Typically, if we aren't getting crazy snow like we did this last week, we should be okay. The thing was, is I saw my neighbors and our friends in panic because they were trying to get to the hospital to say goodbye to a loved one, and the county just drove by and got them stuck. Joel, the third-party, was like, "What's going on? I'll do everything I can with the grader." And then, we hand dug them out.
So, it's actually, it's not just this area. It goes all the way back to Two Hundred and Twentieth, if you're aware. That road is fifty-foot right-of-way through there, and you have hills on both sides, plus the tree lines from the homes on the south side. So, like last year, when we got the nine-and-three-quarter inch of snow that came mostly from the south, this road drifted in not this bad because the wind wasn't that much, but there's basically snow fence on either side, natural snow fence that causes the snow to drop out. And then, with the trees on the south side and the hills on the north side, there's also some hills on the south side, there's nowhere for that snow to go with the equipment. I mean, we try and widen out as much as we can. We put a loader out there. We have, I have loaders running south part of the county right now and the north part, opening up the lesser-traveled roads that, forty-foot right-of-way, excuse me, hills both sides that just drift in terrible, but aren't, they're not driven every day.
From Two Hundred and Twenty to where you're seeing right here, though, it's not as bad as right here.
No, this time, it wasn't as bad. It can be just as bad over there.
You have open space, and the road is elevated from Two Hundred and Twenty to west of that. But once you start going up a hill, this is where you get your ten-foot drifts. You don't have ten-foot drifts all the way down from Two Hundred and Twenty. You have them right here.
I mean, a permanent solution, if the commissioner is looking at that, would be to potentially acquire more easement for a right-of-way, or work with utility companies to see if they will hold the utilities out of the way and cut that hill to the north down. That'll slow this happening when you get storms out of the north, which generally most of them are, but sometimes we get those freak ones that blow from the south, that it could do the same thing with a southern wind added into a storm. The concern is, what utilities are there? There's fiber in the ditch, there is power that's potentially outside the right-of-way. Most likely, there's a gas line out there through that, not in that stretch, okay. There's also a water line offside of the right-of-way right now. So, depending upon how far drastically we go to open that up, we may be relocating a water line at the county's cost. If the rest of the utilities are in the right-of-way, the cost is on the utility company to relocate if we're doing a road improvement. If they are outside the right-of-way, the county is responsible for the cost to relocate those utilities, or reacquire private easements for them if we extend the right-of-way or impact their easement in any way. But unfortunately, this isn't the only area that we have problems like this. It's just the nature of the hilly terrain we have and the roads that were, this one's not a FAS route. It was never improved off the original, especially this mile, had no additional right-of-way granted to it from, other than its statute right-of-way. It was granted by statute. So, it's fifty feet through there. A mile to the east, it's sixty-six feet. A mile to the west, it's actually sixty feet. So, I don't, why this wasn't added at that point in time, I do not know. I mean, that was back in the early nineteen hundreds. In nineteen fifty-two, I believe, the one was granted a sixty-foot right-of-way easement. This section was not. I mean, there's always things that can be done. But at the same time, it's up to the three of you to decide where you want us to focus.
Anything that could be done currently on the way we plow to alleviate some of the concern?
I don't know where we can get the snow to go. I mean, that's why it's only one-lane track is because that's him pushing it as far as he can. And he tries to throw to the north side where there's no entrances. Unfortunately, the snow has to get off the roadway. There's not much of a ditch in that area because of the hillsides and the trees that are right along the right-of-way line are potentially encroaching in the right-of-way. There's nowhere for that snow to go, short of bringing a loader and hauling it off with dump trucks, which would be a tight fit through there.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned, guys. I mean, it's not, I'm just concerned that I don't want, with no notice, and cars plowing, coming through. This is a very clear view that this is one vehicle that's right here, and you're expecting semis and tractors and everything else that are coming from the field yard beyond this road, meeting at a hill. When the wind's blowing, this is a calm morning day, this is Friday morning, this picture that I sent, or showed you that video, that was Saturday. That was the next day. And you're a sitting duck if you don't want to turn left and, because you can't see with kids in your back of your car, you just sit in the road, and now you're just stuck. Brendan and I sat in the road because we couldn't go anywhere because the plow hadn't come through. Otherwise, we would have been stuck together.
What kind of traffic is on that, Brendan? Can we get a traffic count?
Try and, we can set up, I wouldn't recommend putting out counters right now.
No, 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 no. Not at all.
When the lanes have opened, because my equipment would be in the middle of the roadway, and I don't want it hit. I want the tubes hit for the counts, but not the actual counters themselves.
Well, let's...
And as Mr. Graham said, you know, is it going to require a traffic study again to put a...
If you want to change the speed limit, yes, sir.
And the same thing here. Narrow road for now until we can get something resolved.
In any way that I can help, you know, I'm all about that.
I mean, snow fence could potentially be put, if the northern landowners agreeable to it, snow fence could be put up there. At the moment, the county does not own any snow fence and does not put up any snow fence. But that's something that can change if the commissioner wishes us to do that. But we'll have to make decisions on where it's put up, and if the landowners agreeable to it. Fortunately, this isn't the only area this happens. This is just the one that's been brought up today. There are others that have called in about similar issues that we address the best we can, working within our means with our tools and equipment employees. But fourteen-hundred miles of roadway, it's not all going to be blacktopped and paved with eighty-foot right-of-ways with nice flat-bottom ditches. If we did, you'd be very upset with me because I would be way over budget.
Well, let's take tally of how many places like this throughout the county. So, if we're going to address one, we at least have an idea of how many we have, and we can address it at a later date to see what maybe solutions are plausible.
This is the only one that I'm aware of at this point in time that has homes in this amount of frequency on it.
And there's two more being built.
Further?
Twelve-fifty-two Fairground Road was split up three ways. It was used to be a horse pasture. Now, there's three new owners of that. The property that's directly south of this is for sale, has been for sale for a year. There's another five-hundred acres that was sold past that area.
Yeah, about a mile and a half.
About a mile and a half of that. Home Depot won't come down. Leon's Welding won't come down. All right.
Well, like I said, I think right now, all we can do is work with Brendan and see if there's other places. I mean, the operators know of those. You know, we've got this one on record. We just need to take a look at it and see if there's any feasible solution that can come from it.
Yep. I mean, we had portions of Wilds Road, portions of Mendota Road, that we had loader on, shoveling snow off of portions of Shenzhen Road. Shenzhen Road is an FAS route through there. So, it's, this is just the one where there's homes right adjacent to where the drifts occur.
Oh, and there's other places where homes are looking to go that are going to be future problems. So, this is something that will need, that we'll have to look at addressing, so...
Is there an alternate route that you could get out right now in case this does happen again, or not?
So, yeah, I mean, if you pull up that map again, there's an added easement that I could access.
Getting there all...
Yeah, so, this is the easement that we're talking about right here.
Right.
To access my property. I would come out my property and come down this way and have to go out this way, which is fine. I wouldn't even mind hiring Joel this way. But this is the easiest route. And not only that, the county's going to come down here, and they block this one too. This is also an eight-foot drift because they're blocking this, and there's trees right here. So, I mean, yes, it's possible, you know, but...
To fix?
Yeah, it's like right in front of us.
There is a drift there. It doesn't get quite as large when you have the wind like that, and it can also be thrown more to the east side of the road. There's not as tall of a bank there that, when the plow's going, it kicks snow up and out of the, off the roadway. It can be forced more, it's got more room to sustain the snow load. Whereas that stretch directly north of his property, there's trees and there's hillside. There's nowhere for that material to go, short of loading it out and hauling it away, which can be done. But we also needed to work on keeping, getting every road open.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, I think for now, we have to look at alternatives of what we can do and just approach the process with whatever we need.
One last thing, though, in the short term, because there's long-term and short-term solutions. Short-term solution is that, when Brendan came back out, he did a really great job of telling them, "Hey, we've got to make more room. Like, you can't just do one pass." And so, I think in the short term, can you open it a little bit more? Yes, the answer's yes. We just did that.
As the snow disappears and weather conditions allow, I'm sure that's what they're going to do.
So, what we do for practice when we have snows like that is we always punch one pass through every roadway before we start going and widening on the unpaid roads. So, that way, businesses, homeowners can get out. They have to use caution because, and through those drifts, there'll be just one lane that's plowed. Not all of them are on hills. There unfortunately are some on hills, but in order to keep, open everything up to traffic, they punch one pass through to get, start the roads open up, and then come back through after everything has one punched through, and start widening out the roadways, getting the snow off the road top as best they can. Some areas, the snow can't be shoved off because there's no ditch, there's trees, hills in the right-of-way that block the snow to come off, so we get as much off as we can because when it does melt, all that moisture goes right into the roadway and it gets soft.
It goes back to being part of it. It's part of living on county and county right-of-ways, so... Okay, well, I appreciate it. We'll do, I'm sure Brendan and the guys out of Public Works will do what they can as conditions allow, and we'll look into future solutions. Thank you, Brendan.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Anita, no? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Skipped over, we have monthly departmental report. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look through?
Yep.
Yeah.
Everything looked good.
Looks fine, no questions.
Okay. I'd like to make a few comments on it because it's kind of the year-end type report. Just highlight a few things from each department. The Communications Department handles over forty-six thousand calls throughout the year. Sixteen percent of those calls are about, or ninety-seven hundred are about nine-one-ones, so emergency-type situations. So, I want to applaud them for the services they do, and I know we'll have some introductions of new people. Environmental and landfill have nearly two-hundred people come through, and almost one-point-eight million pounds of waste for the month of December that have been handled. So, there's a lot of, that comes out to about sixty pounds per resident of waste for the month of December. So, keep that in perspective. EMS for the month had three-hundred-and-forty runs. Eighty-four, or eighty-four percent were emergencies. For the year, that's thirty-six-hundred-and-twenty-five total runs. That's almost ten runs a day with, that reaches almost ten percent of our county population. So, one out of every ten people has had EMS services work for them. So, hats off to them. Fire Department, incidents are down over twenty percent, which is a good thing, but their total number of training hours is over six-thousand hours a month, our hundred and part-time and volunteer employees. Our Health Department is, the treatments are down, but preventative measures that are offered are up significantly. So, it looks like we're trying to keep our county healthier rather than treat the issue or preventing it. Public Works, for the month of May, for the month of December, maintained twelve-hundred-and-twenty-eight miles. This is, you know, during only twenty working days with multiple days of rain delays and weather delays. That's nearly a hundred percent of all county right-of-ways, non-paved roads maintained. Our Sheriff's Department had over nine-hundred calls or incidents, and twelve-thousand for the year. They also handle an average jail population of eighty inmates per day for most of the year that I've been tracking. So, and then, also, the courthouse that they are in charge of securing had over nineteen-thousand visitors come through. That's up twenty percent from the year prior. So, just keep that in mind as we go forward here. And then, the treasurer is handling nearly seventy million dollars with the financially healthy status of our county between school districts, courts, and other entities. So, anyway, just a few highlights that I wanted to bring to the attention of everybody in our audience, so in case they didn't read all the departs, kudos to all of our departments.
That's right. That way, also, our community knows that, you know, twelve-hundred miles, that, you know, we got, what, fourteen-hundred approximately total? So, guys are all working, and appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll move on to our introduction of Communications Department employees.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeff Fridgeway, Communications Director. Pardon my voice, I've been struggling with it the last couple of days. With us this morning is a good majority of our communications staff. I'm really proud of our team that we have, we built together the last multiple years. Some of them have been with us for about fifteen years in the center. Some of them have been with us just for a short, little over a month here. So, really exciting to have our team with us, starting right, my right, your left, Shift Lead Rachel Kraus, Jasmine Abair, one of our dispatchers, dispatcher Rachel Barnes. See who I got. Kristen Osborne is behind me. Star Fritz. Skylar Augustine. Jason Dinko, another one of our shift leads. Austin Schmider, Shift Lead. And our newest dispatcher with us, Sadie Miller. So, really exciting to have our team that we have with us, very dedicated to what they do. As you mentioned, the hours, or the number of phone calls that they take down there, they've done a little bit of everything. Actually, two of us, I'm going to highlight something we did over the last couple of years, two of them, they're already irritated at me here. Rachel and Austin had the awesome opportunity to help deliver a baby over the phone this past year. We're really excited about that. And so, just the opportunity for them to serve our community over the phone, helping when people are in need of assistance. It's just really a great opportunity. We've got a great staff. Really appreciate the support that you have provided our team, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with the community.
Great.
Any questions?
Well, we're happy to have all of you under the county and look forward to working with all of you.
All right.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard the county. I like the jackets, the Ellis County jackets look good on you.
Thank you.
The young lady that helped over the phone, that is an honor. That is something they will never forget, you will never forget, and I will never forget. And I'm sure with the other commissioners and along with our community, that is a great deal.
Absolutely.
Good training and way to go. Thank you. And thank all of you. Good training and way to go. Thank you. And thank all of you for what you do.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll, uh, move to, uh, Ms. Danita, uh, EMS field save award.
Good morning. Danita Schrader, Ellis County EMS. So I'm going to read a little bit of thing here to you. On August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, we responded to a nine-one-one call for a female having a seizure at a local gas station. When our crew arrived, they found the female was not breathing and had no pulse. CPR and respirations were initiated and the female was found to be in a non-perfusing heart rhythm. Over the course of the next few minutes, our crew gave her two defibrillation shocks with cardiac monitor, started an IV, gave her cardiac medicine, and placed an advanced airway. With those life-saving actions, our crew was able to get her heart beating again and they initiated, initiated transport to our local emergency room for further care. She was able to leave the hospital a week later with no neurological deficits and return home. I was able to call her and speak with her and she apologized that she's not able to be with us today. They live, um, pretty, pretty far away from here, so, um, but she did say her and her husband were very appreciative and praised our crews and their quick response and professionalism. She said without our crews, she would not be here today. To define a field save in EMS, it is defined as a patient that regains a pulse in the field and survives to be discharged from the hospital with little or no neurological effects. This is a rare occurrence for us. And the average survival rate for an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest is only around ten percent. That day, our providers were able to use their knowledge and their skills to provide life-saving care for this individual and to divide that ten percent. I want to thank our technicians today and I want to thank them for choosing to do this profession and to help keep, for help provide emergency care to our community and those that visit our community as well. Um, I have awards for them and if you would like to come up and hand them out with me, I'd appreciate it. And we have technician Emma Moore. Sure.
Congratulations.
Technician Kevin Haynes.
Thank you.
Technician Tim Whitmer. We have technician Isabella Bolig. And technician Dustin Henry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you. Well, that is, uh.
You didn't just affect one.
They affected a bunch of lives. We need to affect the family, whatever. Got to be appreciating you guys every day. We all do. Thank you for your services. And, um, as we talked before, we do get watched at Ellis County. So this is really a plus again because all the other counties are watching us on live stream. So thank you very much. And Danita, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Very professional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
Yeah.
Uh, next, we'll, uh, move on to our foster grandparent and senior companion program updates.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. That was kind of emotional.
I, I almost teared up too, so.
So my name is Tanya Rohr. I'm the director of the senior companion and the foster grandparent programs. First, I'd like to thank you for your continued support of our programs. I don't know how many years, um, we've received support through the Ellis County Council on Aging, uh, funding, but it's been a lot of years and we truly appreciate it. Um, our volunteers are very dedicated, senior volunteers. Um, so our programs tap into the resources of those individuals in our community who have knowledge and time and energy to give back to their communities. And so, I'm going to tell you a few things about what they've done in the community this year. Um, foster grandparents are, um, just incredible individuals who serve children one-on-one in classrooms. And so, we had six volunteers who served forty-six students one-on-one, um, and two hundred and twenty-one children in the classrooms overall. They served over fifty-five hundred hours in the classroom and, um, also in the summertime. We had some reading programs at Ellis Public Library as well as Hayes Public Library. So our volunteers spent time reading with children, giving them that extra, uh, reading time. They also serve at Hayes Area Children's Center, um, also with a PENHAW program through Hayes High School, Holy Family, Lincoln Elementary, St. Mary's in Ellis, Tiger Tots, um, at Fort Hayes, Victoria Elementary, Washington Grade School, and Wilson. So, um, they're well represented throughout the community in helping those children achieve, achieve their goals. Our programs, I guess I didn't mention, but we provide a stipend for low, um, for income-qualified volunteers. So they get four dollars an hour for their service and for their time. And that goes directly back to those volunteers tax-free. It is a stipend. We also reimburse them for their transportation. So their mileage when they drive from their homes to the site they serve and back, um, just so that, that does not, um, you know, hurt them. You know, they're mostly on limited incomes and it also then brings that money back into the communities they serve, so. Senior companions are individuals who serve other seniors, mostly seniors in the community. So they provide one-on-one, um, visiting. So they're companions to those individuals. They can help with daily living tasks with a goal to keep them living in their homes longer. Uh, they also can provide respite to family caregivers. And so last year, we had twenty-nine volunteers in the county. They provided service to a hundred and twenty clients. Um, a hundred and nine of those were for independent living and eleven of those, um, were family caregivers that they gave respite to. So, um, they served over fifteen thousand hours. And the other thing that they do, which I think is pretty remarkable in our community, is they can help those individuals get to medical appointments. And also for, um, essential errands to go help them get groceries, get to the bank, make sure that they're able to maintain their lives while living at home, sometimes very isolated and lonely. So they took, um, individuals, um, two hundred and ninety-nine trips for medical appointments and five hundred and sixty-one trips for those essential errands. We also do reimburse our volunteers if they write down their, their mileage, which many of them don't. They just do it out of their own, you know, goodwill to help people. But if they write down their mileage, we reimburse for their mileage. And so these trips only account for those who actually reported those, those trips to us. So. Our programs have been in the community for a long time. I know, um, Michael and Bobby both were able to come to our celebration for senior companions last year and foster grandparents as well. Um, I would invite you all to come if you're able to come and help us recognize those individuals, thank them for their service. Um, we have a recognition coming up in April for foster grandparents and we'll get an invitation for that. And it's also our fiftieth year celebration for fifty years in the community in July for senior companions. So, um, I don't know if you have any questions, but that's kind of who, who we are and what they're doing.
I just like to thank you for all you do, Ms. Rohr, and, um, I think you got your plate full.
Yeah, yes. And after COVID, it's been, we just would love to get more volunteers. So any way you can help us spread the word. Um, there's a waiting list for senior companion services. It's free. Uh, there's no charge to clients for our services. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Well, I, I would like to just make one comment for you. That is quite the statement with only a hundred volunteers, over fifteen thousand hours. So kudos to all those volunteers. That is a major feat. And, and everybody should be thoughtful of that when they, if they can volunteer just an hour, look at what so few have done. So that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heartland Community Foundation. I don't see Sarah out here. No, different Sarah. Okay. Uh, City of Victoria, Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Good morning again. John Schulte, Mayor of Victoria. I have James Robin with Grow Hayes also up here. We've been working on our, uh, NRP for about a year, probably just a little shy of that. The city has passed it. The school district has passed it. And the final step in implementing this is to get the county to agree to that. Uh, I believe James would be better to, and to explain the actual nuts and bolts of the plan.
Sure.
James Robin with Grow Hayes. Uh, I was before you guys here about a month ago, right before Christmas, talking about the NRP. Again, it's, it's an economic incentive to spur building in, in communities. It abates property taxes back to the applicant. So if they improve their property, in this case raising their, uh, county evaluation of the home, ten thousand dollars, then they would get in the City of Victoria for residential, seventy percent of that increased evaluation of their property taxes back as a, as a refund or rebate, if you will. So it's a, uh, it's a crucial step. We're, we're, we're working towards more housing in Victoria, adding more houses and even revitalizing some old buildings in Victoria. The, the VCC is working on their St. John's project and this is will, will be the first applicant. If approved, they will come forth and they're, uh, projecting a couple million dollar project. So it's, it's a big kickback for them once they get this thing done to help them, uh, keep, keep that project going and keep it alive. So, I can answer any questions. That's, that's a really short synopsis. I know you guys are pretty, pretty up to speed on it. So, um, any questions you might have?
Is it still with the seventy percent residential, ninety commercial, and a hundred percent historical?
Yes. And, and the one thing to note on the historical is, um, it's a hundred percent historical, less the five percent that the county gets for their, their administration. So we, we correct that. Um, that way this county still gets paid for doing the work that, that they're doing for administering the program for the city.
Mr. Schulte, is, uh, the people in Victoria, are they excited about this? I mean, are you getting a good?
Yes, we actually put a short article in our previous newsletter that came out in November and we've already had several people inquire about it. And we've, we've got people waiting to start projects for this to pass.
Good deal.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you've been in contact with, uh, the appraiser's office and they're on board with any, with the process that you're going to do?
Yeah, we, we worked with Darren and also the, the appraisals and, and the treasurer's department. There were some back and forth on differences of how one city wants to do it to the next. And we, we kind of agreed that they wanted to go off the evaluation to, to make the, the, this, the program worth its while. If you increase your property taxes, it's taxes enough, uh, your evaluation enough, then it really becomes worth the, the applicant's time to go, go forth and get that rebate. I know the city of Hayes is doing something a little bit different. I think at the end of the day, their dollar value of dollars spent and our increased of evaluation kind of equals out to about the same amount, if you will. Uh, it won't always work out that way, but that's kind of the, the differences is City of Victoria has determined to use the, about increased county appraisal evaluation as the deciding, kind of the end factor. A lot of that comes to education on the front side. You know, it's going to take city staff getting a hold of me, uh, I'll be a resource for them continually as people want to know more information about it to hi, give them the most education that they can and make it very black and white. You have to reach these metrics to, to, to make this thing work. Even, even the, the suggestion to work with county appraisal before they go do their project to come and talk to them, make sure that's, it's going to qualify at the, at the end of the day. Everything's up to, to how it's evaluated at the end of it. But, uh, making sure they're educated, the applicants educated as much as they can be. That way we don't have a, an issue at the end of it saying, hey, you guys said this and, and what happens is they're not really understanding what the program is. So. Education's key and, and, um, we'll work with Jamie in, in the front office there in Victoria to make sure she's up to snuff and John and, and I have, I have utmost confidence in them and also the, the county staff to answer any questions that someone might have on, on the phone call coming in.
Okay. Well, you answered my question, so I appreciate that. So, gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve this?
Yeah. I'll, uh, move to approve the NRP in agreement for the City of Victoria.
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
It is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, uh, twenty twenty-four noxious weeds for KDOT.
Good morning, commissioners. Gary Haas, weed control supervisor for the noxious weed department. I'm here today for your approval and your signature on our twenty twenty-four county agreement to treat noxious weeds for KDOT. Last year in twenty twenty-three, we increased our labor and equipment rates both. And after reviewing it all, I'd like to stay constant with that one more year and probably look into it next year for an increase. Um, we did eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars worth of, uh, application for them and would probably see similar. May, we might be able to do a little bit more for them this year with the extra staff that we have now. If there's need for it, we'll be able to handle it. So. That's it.
Questions?
I have no questions. Um.
Pretty straightforward. I'll move. Let's see, where's my language here? Is there a motion? Okay. I move to approve the twenty twenty-four Kansas Department of Transportation Bureau of Maintenance County Agreement to Treat Noxious Weeds contract.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have, uh, off system, uh, twenty twenty-four off-system bridge program right of way.
Morning again, commissioners. Brendan McKay, Ellis County Public Works Director. So before you use request to allow Penn Co Engineering to negotiate for the right of way required for this bridge on our behalf, similar to how the county had done with the right of way for the Northwest Business Corridor. We've already approved the project in the agreement with KDOT. So this is just the last or step in the process to, in order to put it in. We're replacing a smaller structure with a much larger structure that'll handle the, better handle the loads of the traffic and the waterway underneath it. That road currently overtops when we get heavy rains. This new bridge, if it overtops, we'll have a lot more stuff underwater before that happens. We'll probably all need to be driving boats at that point in time, so.
Okay. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I have none.
Feels like I should, but I don't.
This is, now this is for the acquisition or using PennCo for the acquisition of the right of way?
Yes, they're the ones negotiating with the landowners.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. I'll, uh, move to allow PennCo Engineering to negotiate the right of way acquisition for parcels needed to complete the twenty twenty-four off-system bridge program and sign the attached form.
Seconded.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. That one is signed or will be signed.
Getting it now.
Okay. Uh, we have the, uh, agreement between Department of KDOT and Ellis We have the agreement between Department of KDOT and Ellis County for 2025 High Risk Rural Road Grant.
Yep.
Brendan?
So if you remember, a few months back, you signed a form, the 1302 Form for KDOT. That's the county saying that they will have the funds to pay for the work and get reimbursed on. And then we want to move forward with the project that was selected, the pavement markings, and no passing zone reevaluation. That was this approval, so they could start doing the programming, they call it, which is making this agreement that's before you now. So we've already said yes to it. This is just, you need to say yes again, more officially this time.
Okay. Discussion?
I have no discussion. It's, when it says no cost, that doesn't get any better than that.
No, the cost will be fully reimbursed on this one.
Right.
Gotcha. Have we been fully reimbursed from the prior grant? Okay.
Yes, sir.
How long does that usually generally take? Just guessing.
They're fairly quick about it. I mean, that's, we can submit partial reimbursements throughout the project. It's cleaner for us if we can bankroll it till the end and then submit for one full reimbursement at the end, like, just like we do with the cost share grants and quite a few of the other grants.
Okay. Sounds good. I guess we don't need a motion on that one, do we?
Nope.
Well.
Yeah, there's a few signatures on it, so yes, please.
The wrong box was checked.
Well, I move the, I move the commission to accept to sign the FFY 2025 KDOT High Risk Rural Road Grant Agreement.
I'll second that.
Got a motion to second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, that one was on me. They got me the agreement at 11:35, and they were due at noon. So it was a rush to get it done, so it was done in time for this last meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Brendan. Next, we have Future Sale of Public Works Facility and Grounds. This one is Mr. Jeter.
Bill Jeter, County Counselor. I passed out to all the Commissioners and Bobby and Darren before we started a copy of KSA 19211, which governs the sale or disposal of county property. You'll notice, well, to be more specific, I think we're on the agenda today because of the future decision to be made regarding the public works, current public works facility, whenever the that property is vacated, which I think will be sometime toward the end of the year, is what we hope, anyway. So if you look at what I highlighted right, right off the top, where you have property that's worth more than $50,000, of which this property would be, there's a, the process within that paragraph on how the county does that requires unanimous vote of the county commissioners. There needs to be a series of publication notices to the public. If, within 45 days after the first publication notice, there's a petition signed by 2% of qualified electors, then it needs to be brought to a vote by the electors on whether to sell the property or not. That's kind of a complicated process, and I believe in maybe 2009, the legislature provided an alternative process that Commissioners could follow. And if you'll turn to page two, I've got highlighted what that process is. And that's the process that we've used in the past to sell real estate owned by the county, like the former EMS property and the former Rural Fire property that was in town, and there's been a couple others. But in that process, the commission adopts a resolution allowing for an alternative method for disposing of the property, which requires notification to the public that the property is going to be sold, describe the property to be sold, and the method of sale, which can include a fixed price, a negotiated bid, sealed bid, public auction, or any other method of sale. What we've done in the past is solicited sealed bids with the right for the Commissioners to reject any and all bids. And that's always done with an understanding either from the Appraisers Office or by somebody that's qualified as to an appraised value of what we think the property is worth. And then the commission can make a decision on whether to accept the highest sealed bid, which I believe in all cases, the bids, the highest bid has been higher than the value that the commission has placed on the property. So that would be my recommendation as to the procedure to look at. And then again, if the bid's not sufficient, the commission then can just reject all bids and then go to another method, which could include an auction sale or private listing, whatever. So that's, this is just an informative piece for the Commissioners to look at. And again, my recommendation would be ignore the initial provision at the top of that statute and look at on page two, that alternative method.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The alternative method is something the county's been, has done multiple times throughout the past years.
Right. In fact, every property that we've sold, oh gosh, going back 10 or 15 years, have all been done by sealed bids.
Okay.
Now, we could always run into a situation where it doesn't work this time, but it has been very good, and the school district has done the same process too.
Okay.
Even though they don't have to.
They have other.
The Board of Education has the right to dispose of any property in any manner they feel is in the best interest of the school district. So they don't have to go through this statutory process.
Okay.
And the other thing on timing, this process from start to finish until actual closing can be done in 60 days. We can always, too, take into account that we could delay possession of the property until it's completely vacated by the Public Works Department.
That's kind of my question. Do we have to wait till it's vacated?
And close it in August or September and delay actual possession till later in the year.
Okay.
But we'll know.
We can dictate all that.
But we'll know, you know, come summer or late summer, the timing of when Public Works is gonna be out too.
Okay. Well, if we, if we go this route, the best thing to do would be to start with some initial appraisals?
Yes.
Okay.
And whether we want to do that in-house through the somehow, or, I mean, however, whatever the commission wants to do in that regard. Or we could hire somebody to do an appraisal for us.
Okay.
The proceeds from it, do we essentially put it to general fund and then allocate it through budgeting? Or can we determine what we're gonna put the proceeds towards ahead of time? Is there, is there any, I guess, conflicts to?
Well, I don't think so. I mean, that would be a Darren question.
I think a lot of that would be dependent on when it sells. If, like this year, it would be in 2024. If we were to sell it and receive the revenue, it would be unrecognized revenue. Or if you had a planned expenditure, there's no budget authority for that planned expenditure. So that's kind of what Mr. Jeter and I were discussing about the sealed bid process is, since we're probably not gonna vacate the building until the very end of the year, we'd try to have this process done before the budget is completed for 2025. So that way, I'm just gonna throw out real quick timeframes, but if we publicize it in June, have open sealed bids come back in July, be able to review them in August, we would know what the amounts are. That would give us a month to work with the potential buyer and then be able to put that into the budget as recognized revenue. And then if you did have an allocated expense you would like to tie that to, we could put all that into the budget for 2025, have the closing date January 5th, and then we would have the money, and then we'd have the budget authority to make that expense right at that moment, or, you know, within the first couple weeks, or whenever you wanted to, depending on what the expenditure would need for that timeframe.
But due to statute, we as a board have to have our budget built around possible revenues. We have to show that and have the authority to receive that.
So on a good year, it may not, when I say a good year, if we were significantly under budget, and I don't know what the value is of this building, but say it's a million dollars, to anticipate a million dollar expense now, I couldn't guarantee at the end of the year that we would have a million dollars left in our budget room, under budget, to be able to make a payment for whatever you wanted to use those funds for. We could change that, and we could amend our budget and go through the whole budget process a second time for the same year to change our revenues and our expenses. But it's gonna be so late in the year before, and we're looking, I think the timeframe was September to October, without any weather delays, which obviously we were having some at this point, before it would even be anticipated that we would have access to move. So once it opens, we're gonna have to move our people out there. It's gonna be so late at the end of the year that it wouldn't make much sense to amend or a new budget at October, November, December of this year.
There's cost to amending too, don't you have, we have to republish it and allow for public comment to amend and all that?
Yeah. It, essentially the same thing, just a lot less work, just because we're changing essentially two line items in the budget.
Yeah.
I think maybe we should start with the appraisal process and, just for, you know, just for candidness, be, go out and seek alternative appraisals.
That's my thought also. Go out, go outside and get a couple different ones and just see where we're at on it.
Can it, not, yeah, I agree with that. I'm just kind of thinking out loud here. Not that I want to do this, but the land, the building, the land, can we sell it to, could it be sold in pieces, I guess? To separate buyers for different reasons? Can we chop it up if we?
Believe that you can sell like that as an advantage.
Had a discretion to sell it however you want to.
Okay. I don't know why we would, but I just kind of, you know, just kind of thinking out loud a little bit. But yeah, I think we should kind of find some appraisals, see what we think we're gonna get out of it in a sealed bid. I think that's the approach we should take ultimately.
Because if you're good with Mr. Jeter, then it's worked in the past, unless you see a glitch in there, but.
I don't see any glitch at all. And another thing to take into account on timing, if we put out bids in, let's say, June, as part of the bid process, we could provide that closing may occur in August or September, but possession won't occur until later in the year, or whatever point in time we believe that the property will be vacated by Public Works.
Right.
So we don't necessarily need to time closing with possession.
Which.
But I would, but if we're not gonna do that, I think it needs to be in the bid process, so that people who are bidding know that.
Right, agreed. But we wouldn't actually really close until after the first to get into our 2025 budget. Is that correct?
Well, that's a timing issue that I think the commission needs to take into account too. When do you want the money?
Right. Okay. I guess if once we have our appraisals, we can kind of look at our budget and see where we're at and adjust off of there.
Well, as we get into June or July, we're gonna have a better idea when we'll be able to provide possession to.
Right. And usually, Darren, what's our timeframe on our budget process? Usually, we do a big budget ask kind of.
I haven't set the budget, excuse me, I haven't set the budget calendar for 2025's budget yet, but last year, we adopted and had the R and R hearing, public hearing, and everything on September the 12th. So if we had it all done by sealed bid by August, we would easily be able to add that number in before the final budget is adopted and approved and by you all in September.
Okay.
It'll probably be within a few days there, because the statute hasn't changed for when everything is due to the clerk to be turned into the state. So it's probably gonna be around that September 11, 12, 13 timeframe.
So kind of just working backwards, if we're looking for an early August bid, we need to be about the middle of June, public notice and submission? Is that, would that be correct? About 45 days?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I would tell Darren to look at getting some appraisals. They're not gonna go out tomorrow, to date and start inspecting, so get it on a couple of different appraisers to-do list, so we have that. I don't think that'll be very costly.
I would think if you had, if you had an idea what the property might be worth through the appraisal process sometime in May, it would be kind of a target date.
Okay. And then we can put that out there and.
Because once we know that, then we can, Darren and I can work on for your approval a bid process.
Okay. Well, I'm okay with that.
Yep.
And I guess when we do that with the appraisers, like Commissioner Verge just said, do we cut it up in different pieces? I mean, that's something to ask the appraiser, see what their thought is on it, too.
Put something within the bid process that if there's an alternative method of just not buying a parcel or split it up, that might be a proposal that they could submit, so that way you have both options. I'm sure we could probably work something up on that, too. I would think. Just, I guess, just so we don't landlock the ones in the way far back end, and that's another issue that will come up, but. There's always something.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Alright. Well, then moving on, we'll go to County Administrator Report. Darren?
Just two quick things. First, I had, was able to meet with the Ellis County Fair Board last night at their meeting. I went over some different thoughts for improvements out at the fairgrounds. So maybe upcoming in the future, I'll ask maybe some members of the Fair Board to come in as we start looking through the budget process as to some things that need to be done in regards to some of the bathrooms for updating to some ADA compliance, some ceiling of the windows, fixing up some fence, maybe moving an entrance. Put together a proposal with Brendan and Public Works to create a new entrance to the west side of the fairgrounds for better traffic flow, kind of separate some of the fairground activities, RPM Speedway activities, to kind of keep them separate from the Shankon Ryan Building. So had a good meeting with the Fair Board last night and as well as the RPM promoter, trying to get together a process of what maybe the fairgrounds can look like in the next several years. So the commission has the options in front of you all through the budget process to what type of funding that may take to get there. It's just another piece of property that we have to care for and maintain and improve, instead of let property degrade and get worse. And then the other thing is their, their ticket booth, I guess is what you would call it, was hit twice. At one event, a truck driver delivering goods hit their ticket booth on the way in, and on the way out, he actually hit it again. I guess, short memory. But the, we did settle with their insurance and got a reimbursement for the Fair Board to build a new ticket shack out there that'll be a lot, a lot better shape. So I just want to at least let the commission know that we're in the process. Got some bids, got the reimbursement check, and they should be starting here after it starts warming up to have a bigger and better ticket booth out there for both the fairground entrance, the RPM as well as the rodeo arena. And then the second thing is just to remind you, I gave each of you your tickets this morning for the Hayes Area Chamber of Commerce banquet on June 30th, so don't lose them. Sarah said she only has 40 left, I believe, so.
Did you say June or January?
January 30th.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's a long ways off, Darren. I thought he did.
Plug out.
Okay.
Okay. County Commissioner reports.
I got nothing. I got about 10 minutes to get my kids to school.
Oh, okay. Neil?
Yes, just like we were talking about before, recognizing people. Trevor Dinkle has birthday today. He's with the Sheriff's Department. Kevin Haynes with EMS on the 16th, and also Janet Schmidt with HR. Hers is tomorrow. Wish them all a happy birthday. And then I did go to City Hayes meeting last week. Got there a little late, but I was there, so. And then also went to Shenchin's meeting last night. And like Commissioner Liker said, if you can go volunteer for something, volunteer, it's very much appreciated. Pretty much shown what goes on for how many people and how many hours. So with that, everybody stay warm. You can at least take one coat off this afternoon. We're gonna hit 20, so that's all I have.
Okay. I would like to mention in my report, I apologize to IT for not mentioning what they do, but a lot of what we see on their reports, we can't talk about. So I did see theirs. Uh, I'd like to have Brendan come up. Uh, I talked to Brendan a little bit about the roads on the way in, um, why we're seeing, and some people may see not a lack of, but a differentiation of, of how roads were plowed. We have some equipment issues right now that we're dealing through.
Yep, so part of it was the snow came very wet on Monday. We had almost an inch of rain before then. On the unpaved roads, if you get on them before they freeze underneath, it just turns into a mud, sloppy mess. And we didn't even get the opportunity to do that because I had all staff, graders, plows, even the pickup plows. We broke parts on the one, on the blacktop roadways. My, all of Monday and until about noon, 11 o'clock noon on Tuesday. Because that was when we were finally getting caught up with just the paved roads. So then and from there, they went to their major collectors, then the roads with homes and businesses, and then all the narrow roads that ditches are farmed shut, minimal traveled roads. So that's the order that we go through them in order to keep the roads open for doing what we can with what we have. We've had between three and four graders down unfortunately most of this snow event. One with a rear main seal. One lost an axle seal slash potentially bearing. One had transmission lines leaking and batteries that were so dead that we brought out cables from my personal garage to help get it limped into the shop because we couldn't get the battery tray out. And then we had broken windows on one and the DEF header on another one. So we robbed Peter to pay Paul. The machine that has a rear main, myself and another foreman, we're in there at five in the morning last week, putting that lift group on the landfill's plow. They're letting us, or grader. So that way it still had the ability to put the V-plow on to push out some of these large drifts. And then we also robbed the DEF header off that to get the other machine back up. We also had one machine that's having fuel pressure issues. Don't know if jelling up. It's not with a code reading, but it is derating him. Still waiting to hear back from Kat. He went out yesterday afternoon to look at that machine to see if we need to haul it in, or if he's going to be able to fix it or address it in the field. And then we also had our, two of our dump trucks that were purchased back in 2021. The defroster vent is on the pasture side of the cab, which is great, except for when you're plowing snow, because then it slings it up into that defroster vent. So two of our employees lost their defrosters during that snowstorm. Shop staff looked into it. I looked into it for an hour, hour and a half as well. There's no aftermarket or official product support for a solution, so we came together, rubbed our heads together, and I made a few air ducts that bolted onto the side. And so far, so good. They're working.
Okay.
They don't look the prettiest, the one, but for a dollar worth of plastic and an hour and a half of my time to drop the part, they're, we'll see if it keeps holding.
Okay.
Benefit right now. So that's, we had lots of equipment down, but we were also trying to keep going with what we could. I mean, over the weekend, staff was called. My guys haven't stopped since last Monday, myself included and my foreman included. We had a few that did not go out on Saturday. They, they had prior obligations that were out, but they had at least one path blazed through their entire territory. And then partway through the day, on Saturday, the winds kicked up. Moment they went through an area, it was already blown back shut. They were just, we were not gaining, gaining any ground. We called the guys off. And had them come back on Sunday. So there is that may not have seen a grader on Saturday or Sunday. Their patrolman was out, machines were down, and we just don't have any other machines up for them. Except we're borrowing the landfill's grader at the moment. Thank you, Justin, if you're still here.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update and I appreciate it. And just so people know, we're working through it.
Yeah, there's almost 300 hours of overtime last week, even with people taking parts of the day off for, for plans that they had already scheduled, but we kept machines going. No machine was parked if it could run.
Got it. Thank you, Brendan.
Thanks, Brendan.
Okay. With that, uh, we have no executive session, so we will move for adjournment. So adjourn, yeah, our clock disappeared. We were adjourned at 9:50. Thank you, everyone.
Brand-new clock.
Quit.
That's not good. Does it have a time?